Before we continue with public comment, I must remind the public of how we began this meeting this evening. The board has committed to one another to behaving with respect, decorum, and maintaining a productive dialogue. We hold the public to the same standard. The board sets the culture and the tone for this school district. I often think about how we hold ourselves in this room is how we would want our children to be experiencing their learning in the classroom. And what just occurred is unacceptable of what needs to be happening not only in this boardroom, but in our classroom so that our children feel safe, included, joy, and trust. We will not allow attacking one another, disrespect, hateful and harmful words that I heard that was shared not here on the dais but in the audience. So we will reconvene public comment. We will have 18 speakers, but there will be no standing against the wall. There will only be allowed one speaker standing at the podium at a time. And if there is any out of order, without hesitation, you will be escorted. This is disrupting the business of the board and the action that is before this board tonight. Again, I remind each and every person in this room. Our children are here, our students and our families are not only watching but experiencing tonight's meeting. So at this time, I know that there were speakers, you probably remember. You were in line. Our last speaker was interrupted, so we will ask her. You will have one minute.
My name is Diane. We are all here because we care about education. Some want to censure Commissioner Shu, but what will that accomplish? It won't close the achievement gap. It won't reduce chronic absenteeism. Once you fired the messenger, does the message stop being true? Here we are again, wasting district time on performative anti-racism. I support Commissioner Shu. Do not censure her. She's not the problem. Chronically absent students are less likely to read at grade level, less likely to graduate, more likely to end up in prison. That's the problem. Be offended by that. We have a shared goal, a good education for every student. Focus on that because political show trials and endless bleats of racism are a waste of everyone's time. If you're so worried about racism, go censure Shimon Walton for calling a worker the N-word and threatening to whip his ass. Until then, you're nothing.
Sorry. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Marlene Tran, a retired bilingual educator of newly arrived immigrant youngsters for 35 years in our San Francisco Unified School District. On behalf of many residents, I'm here to support Commissioner Ann Shu. Since Commissioner Shu has offered her apologies for her statements, we hope you will seriously accept our mayor's comments to allow her to continue her services to San Francisco. We hope you will extend the same consideration to her who, because of her newly appointed position, and she can certainly benefit from this mistake as a teaching moment because we believe she will be a dedicated and fierce advocate for all our students and their families. Please allow Commissioner Shu to continue to serve all the students in San Francisco. I just want to say a word in Chinese. Oh, too late. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aline, born and raised in San Francisco, a product of SFUSD and a mom of two. No one is perfect, I'm not perfect, and none of you are. The core responsibility of the school board is to enact the right policies. The first step is to identify the root cause and problem you are solving for. That is what Ann tried to do. Sure, she could have articulated it better, but remember, English is her second language, so we should give her some grace. Her heart and mind was in the right place. Over the last decade, we have been dancing around problems and enacting policies that have resulted in a widening gap of inequity. We need to encourage honest dialogue so we can solve this. Ann is a no bullshit leader and is exactly what we need. She's a strong, female, immigrant, Asian leader representing a large, often forgotten group. And to those board members who have been here the longest and have voted for bad policy after bad policy, you should go admonish yourself. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa. I support Ann Shu to continue as commissioner. Ann Shu has made her apology and take responsibility for her action and that proves that she's being responsible. And since she became the commissioner of SFUSD, she has contributed a lot to SFUSD or to education and also she did a lot of work for minority students. We can't, we shouldn't deny her contribution based on one single mistake. She falls for minorities and I hope that all of us, all of you supports her through being a commissioner. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rabbi Dr. Sophia Katrin Woodley von Rushchild, and I run in support of Ann. I want to tell you a little story. In the 1920s and '30s and '40s, Jews were being scapegoated, and it led to a Holocaust. And why were they scapegoated? Because we were being successful. Today, Asians are being scapegoated and is equally wrong. We should focus more on the problems that exist and root causes of problems that exist and learn from one another. Scapegoating Asians won't work. It's not, it didn't, it will never work. It will only lead to disaster. And I also want to remind you, we're 61% of the population and we, yes, we vote and we will come out in force in November to vote. We stand with Ann. Let's get on with getting the children educated, not political correctness. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Lennabach. I'm the attorney representing the Lowell, Friends of Lowell Foundation that overturned their decision regarding Lowell High School last year. This is an actually sad meeting. We have so much energy in this room that could be used and harnessed correctly for good. I would propose that you close public comment and say not one word and give the six-month restorative justice process the opportunity to take place. Because if you vote tonight, you are perpetuating the David and the Goliath situation. You're also commenting on one of your colleague's First Amendment rights in a political questionnaire. If you allow the restorative justice process to work, all of us can work together for the next six months to end the chronic absenteeism of this school district when it comes to educating our children. And we can make that difference if we work together. So.
Hi, my name is Amy. Several supervisors and some organizations call out Ann Shu to resign. But most of these supervisors and organizations never call out Allison Collins to resign. Last week, Supervisor Shimon Walton used a word in City Hall. None of these organizations and supervisors say a word about it. Do Asian American women have been holding double standard? Dear Commissioner, if you haven't come down Supervisor Shimon Walton, then you should not admonish Ann Shu. If you admonish Ann Shu today, you should come down Supervisor Shimon Walton. If you are holding double standard, then you are the person who is truly racist. And we will never forget your word today. Thank you.
My name is Ellie. I am a SFUSD parent. Commissioners, you have acknowledged that your job is to focus on student outcomes. However, the results of the Opportunity Gap Report shows disturbing data, including chronic absenteeism as high as 63%. High school readiness as low as 15%. There is so much work ahead. Stop with the theatrics. Stop with the hypocrisy. Focus on collaboration. I believe Commissioner Shu displays the qualities of a true leader, one who listens, one who learns, and one who leads. Commissioner Shu, I stand with you. I appreciate your humility, your efforts, your strength, and your grit. Thank you.
My name is Josephine Zhao. The incident pained me so much that we have caused so much harm to the African-American and Latino community. And it also pained me that it is so divisive in other communities as well. There's a lot we have to do to work on anti-black and anti-brown sentiment in the Asian community. We have a lot to do to bring other communities to also understand Asians. As immigrants, there are a lot of things that we are never going to be good at. We don't pass the limits test. I understand that Ann is trying to solve a problem. She meant no malice. Her wording was zooming in into the problem instead of zooming out on the systemic, historical, and racism. We need to have a chance to heal this, move the community together, and move all the Chinese immigrant with us to understand this. Thank you.
Sorry. So my clock starts now. So my name is Selena Chu. I've been here many times and I'm a parent of two students in SFUSD. So I'm here to ask you, have you asked Ann why she said the things that she said? Have you tried to listen to her? That's the first key to understand someone. You did not. You did not. I asked. And this, what she shared, what she said, came from some black and brown families. They told her, this is what we need. This is what we need. This is how the SFUSD can help us. Did you ask her? You did not ask her. You did not ask her and you continue to ask her to apologize, to acknowledge you, to resign. Why we don't have a chance to speak in this city that we call a melting pot? A diverse, a city with diversity? No, you did not allow her to speak.
我需要翻译的。我讲中文。
是，我会帮你翻译。
Okay.好的，多谢。大家好，我叫Angela啦。
Hi, my name is Angela. Commissioner Ann Shu, she had spoken the truth about the imbalances of our district. We have the same, we share the same teachers, same resources, and why is there, like, student outcome difference? Instead of focusing on the politics and sacrifice the quality of our education, she merely focused on, she merely focused on the quality. And she, basically, she needs to tell what the problem is to the public. And Ann Shu, she has already apologized to the public and also take restorative measures and try to work with this, with, work this hand in hand with the minority students. I hope that we can keep her as a commissioner. Thank you.
Okay. 我支持徐安。
Translation, go ahead please.
Hi, my name is Wendy and Ann Shu is an immigrant herself. And since 2003, she has used her wisdom and her experience to help marginal students and challenge students to get through the challenge and close the gap of education. And as she understands minority, she helped minority students understand American culture. She is a scientist, not a politician. And she has already felt sorry and she has sincerely apologized for her action already. And I hope that we can, together, we can push the education further and we, together, we can help our students at SFUSD. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Winnie Fong. I'm retired from the district. I used to be a preschool teacher and I support Ann Shu because I, when I, when I talk to, when I see my students, they have problem, I really honestly, with my heart, to work together and tell the parent what's wrong and the parent work together with me. If the parent didn't know what's going on, they couldn't work together with me. And I feel like Ms. Ann Shu, she used her heart to point out if something needs to improve. And my, I have a granddaughter, she has reading and math problem. And then the teacher point out what's going on and my daughter-in-law, my son didn't feel like being hurt, discriminated or attacked. They work together and my, my daughter-in-law's family spend more time with her. And also, I work, you to work your job. I didn't know English. I work your job to learn my English and get my job.
You have to please. I would just.
我们要支持徐安。
Hi, my name, my name is Yu. I support, I hope that, sorry. Commissioner Ann Shu has represented SF Chinese community, which she didn't have a voice. And I think this is very important to SFUSD. And I wish that we can continue to have her to help our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to note that we have two more speakers. So the speaker who's here at the podium and then one more speaker and then we will conclude public comment. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Spanish, please.
Buenas tardes. Simply, we're going to indicate that we have space only for two more speakers. The person who is currently on the podium and another person. And I also, as an interpreter, I would like to take this chance to please ask the speakers, do not yell on the microphone. We know this is a delicate subject, but we wear headphones and our ears hurt. Sorry I had to say that, but please try to keep your voices at a rational level. Thank you so much.
Okay. Presidents, superintendents, and commissioners, good evenings. My name is Gregory Leong. I'm a San Francisco voter. And I believe Ann Shu is not a racist. To censor her will promote divisiveness between different races of people and between levels of people. Ann Shu will be a good commissioner. She will be fair. She will be diligent. She will use due process. Why don't we let the San Francisco voters to decide her fate? The election is coming up in November and I think the board should really consider it. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Zhang and I'm a Berkeley alum. And I'm here to support Commissioner Shu. So I know Ann in person and when I was a Cal student, she gave me at least an hour mentorship every single week and without asking for any rewards. She is one of the most honest, helpful, and brave people I have ever known in my life. I'll never believe Commissioner Shu is a racist. If you think so, I would say you must misunderstand her. You don't know how hardworking she is trying to provide better school education for our kids in San Francisco despite skin color. She is a problem solver and San Francisco needs her. Thank you.
President Lam, that concludes public comment. What's it? This concludes public comment. We have offered same speakers in support of the acknowledgement as well as against. This will conclude public comment. And if I continue to hear disruption, as I stated numerous times, you will be escorted. That's your last warning. At this time, we are going to begin our discussion. Commissioners, I'm going to. We are now going to begin our discussion amongst the board. You are welcome to stay, but you must adhere to decorum and allowing the board to do its business. I have closed public comment. Each commissioner will have two minutes to share your comments. Commissioners, please adhere to the time limit. Vice President Bogus is going to keep time. We'll start with Commissioner Shu, go counterclockwise, and I will be the last speaker. Very moved. Commissioner Shu.
Thank you, President Lam. I want to reiterate some of what I have stated in my initial apology. Due to systemic racism and inequity. Due to systemic racism and inequality, generational poverty and food and housing insecurity disproportionately affect our BIPOC families. These issues make it harder for children to learn, families to function, and teachers to teach. I misspoke while trying to discuss these serious issues. And in doing so, I said things that unintentionally perpetuated harmful stereotypes. I made a mistake, and I'm deeply sorry. Over the past two weeks, I've met with many people to discuss these issues, including my fellow commissioners, political leaders, and community groups. And I will continue to do so in the coming weeks and months. Unintentionally perpetuating stereotypes especially pains me because my own community is also subject to bias. There's a long history of discrimination towards Chinese people in America. Even today, the API community is still subject to hate crimes and hate speech. And many people view Chinese and other Asians as the so-called model minority. I myself was a subject of this bias when I was the only Chinese person in a graduating high school class of 600 in Erie, Pennsylvania. We can and must overcome all such harmful biases and stereotypes. But canceling one another is not the way to do it. The path forward is through authentic listening and engagement. I am committed to serving all students of SFUSD, especially those who need the most support. For far too long, SFUSD has failed to improve student outcomes for our most marginalized students, especially those from Black and Latinx families. And I would do everything that I can to change that. So once again, I'm truly sorry for the hurt and distraction that I caused everyone. I look forward to getting back to the work that my colleagues and I have committed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a very, very sad occasion, obviously. There's been a lot of hurt. And I think even some of the comments tonight, unfortunately, caused even more hurt to the Black and Brown community. To our Black and Brown brothers and sisters, I just have to apologize for what you've had to sit through and listen to. It deeply saddens me. I want our board to be consistent, and we're not being consistent right now. And admonishment is a very, it's nowhere near a censure. Let's put it that way. A censure is much more severe. So I wish that our board leadership would have put forward at least a censorship with Commissioner Collins. And we may disagree on whether she should have resigned or whether we should have censured her or admonished her. But what the board actually did and what I voted for was a vote of no confidence, which is even more harsh than a censure. So we're not there right now. But I do believe for the board to be consistent with past actions and then move forward with integrity, we have to do something such as a vote of no confidence. People are watching, they're listening, they're understanding. Our families are hurt. And for us to be inconsistent is even more hurtful. I will be bringing forward, if I can, in the future, a resolution for a vote of no confidence.
Commissioner Weissman Ward.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening. I've shared with Commissioner Shu how upsetting, harmful, and disappointing her statement that placed blame on parents and suggested that Black and Brown parents valued their children's education less than others. We talked about how her answer has perpetuated and reflected bias and caused extreme harm to Black and Brown students and their families, and also to me personally, as a biracial woman, half of whose family is Black. I appreciate her apology, and that's an absolutely necessary first step. I also expressed to her that accountability is the other critical piece to repairing harm. I know that she has publicly indicated that she's beginning to do the work. I've talked to her about this. I've told her that the work is iterative and extensive. It involves meeting with community and taking time to engage with others who may have lived different experiences than her own. But just as important and often more time-intensive is a commitment to learning about why the educational system is failing so many of our students. This learning requires understanding, an understanding of the implications of slavery and colonization whose roots are deep and harmful and still, still impacting our Black and Brown communities. As it relates to the reason for this special meeting, I think it's important for two reasons. First, as a board, we are tasked with representing the vision and values of nearly 50,000 students. And we must make clear in no uncertain terms that the notion that parents of Black and Brown students don't value their education is categorically untrue. Second, we're here to highlight the value of accountability, one that I know Commissioner Shu says she is committed to. So I'll be voting today in favor of the motion and believe that this will be the beginning of creating a record of accountability in order to stay true to the board's commitment to advancing the goals of focusing on student outcomes. Thank you.
Go ahead, Student Alex, Kim Rashina.
I want to start off by highlighting that SFUSD has failed Black and Brown families. Some data. In 2016 to 17, SFUSD ranked the lowest in the state of California in terms of Black student achievement, with only 19% of Black students being able to read at grade level, barely half the statewide percentage. In the 2018-19 school year, 20% of Black 7th and 8th graders were suspended at least once during the school year. That's higher than the percentage of Black students that SFUSD is teaching to read at grade level. And according to a report by the city, Black and Latinx students were punished more harshly than their peers. Black students reported feeling racially isolated and facing racially motivated bullying in schools. Black students with disabilities are three times more likely to be bullied than other students with disabilities. Black and Latinx youth are disproportionately represented in the foster care system and juvenile justice system. Black and Brown families and communities have been targeted by the justice system for decades through the war on drugs and other ways, leading to high rates of incarceration, which then negatively affects children. Notice that Black and Latinx parents have no control over the issues that were just listed because they are not in control of the systematic issues that have been ingrained into the fabric of our society for generations since its inception. At the end of the day, it is lazy and offensive to blame Black and Latinx parents for educational disparities. As a district, we need to take accountability for the systemic failure to combat racism and uplift Black and Brown students. Black and Brown families cannot be scapegoated for the problems that the district has created and then failed to address. Black and Brown families have not failed their children. SFUSD has failed Black and Brown families. It is my opinion that the board should vote in favor of this resolution.
Can we ask for the audience to not speak while commissioners are talking, please? Or else you will be asked to leave.
I wanted to start off by acknowledging the people who have come out today to express their opinions and thoughts on this issue. Everybody's thoughts are valuable to this conversation. But I hope that we will also recognize that this conversation should not just be centered around Commissioner Shu's statements, but also the internal biases and prejudices that are present in our school district that negatively impact students of color. Biases, both intentional and unintentional, are something that is visible within the average individual. And it is necessary to both acknowledge these inner biases that reflect upon our community as well as to call them out, especially when one is in a position of power over students of all demographics. It is vital to hold those in power accountable for their statements that inflict harmful and negative stereotypes upon communities in our school. Individuals are not responsible for achievement gaps. We should not be placing blame at the hands of families who are single parents, working sometimes hectic hours at their jobs to support their children, or just simply trying to do their best for their children and their education, regardless of the many difficulties they are facing, and not acknowledge the systemic factors that contribute to achievement gaps. Commissioner Shu's statements are connected to the internal biases that commissioners should not have due to their power and influence over all students. These statements perpetuated many stereotypes and directly contradicted SFUSD's values. I also hope that while it is important and necessary to hold Commissioner Shu and her statements accountable, we will also reflect on how this type of language is used in our communities and our meetings. So I am in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Student outcomes do not change until adult behaviors change. I do not agree with the statement made by Commissioner Shu, and I understand the damage and pain it has caused. Public education should create opportunities for learning, discourse, understanding, and building community. We must interrupt destructive patterns and seek in good faith to build and connect rather than tear apart. That is the work that this board has been doing over the last several months. We've hired a superintendent. We've begun student-centered strategic planning work. And we're reviewing our governance procedures to better serve students. That's what makes this moment especially heartbreaking. We sit here tonight focused on problematic adult behaviors. The district recommended approach to conflict or harm as restorative practices. This involves the building of positive relationships and establishing a supportive environment, interventions, and practices to create a sense of belonging, safety, and social responsibility. At the core, restorative practices are about building and restoring relationships. As a member of the Board of Education, adult behavior should model the student behavior we want to see, especially in times of conflict and strife. I appreciate the board moving to acknowledge board member behavior that does not uphold the values of our district. I appreciate Commissioner Shu stating her willingness to take responsibility. We are still in the moment of determining how and if harm can be repaired and if restorative steps can be undertaken in good faith and outcome. But the first step is acknowledgement. My focus and partnership with the board that shares these values and respect for our diverse communities continues to be ensuring all of our students are supported and successful in their learning, and our district is run for the benefit of our students. Our student outcomes won't change until our adult behaviors change.
I'll have Commissioner Alexander, then Vice President Bogus, and then I will conclude in this initial round of comments.
I've gotten to know Commissioner Shu a little bit over the past few months, and I like her and I respect her. And I know her to be a person of honesty and integrity. And so I believe her when she says that her racist comments came out of ignorance. And I believe her when she says she wants to learn. That being said, I still do have some questions that I think as a board, we need to address. The first one others have referred to, which is how will we determine whether Commissioner Shu has made amends? Because an apology is just step one in the, in the process of making amends. There were many people were saying online and other forums that her comments were true and that she, you know, someone even tonight said, Ann identified the root problem but didn't express it well. I have yet to seen, see evidence of Commissioner Shu speaking out against these comments or challenging them or explaining why her original comments were in fact racist, which I think would be really helpful for her to do if she wants to make amends. Another key question that I think has been raised by the community that I think is a valid one that the board should address is even if, and like I said, I believe this to be true, even if Commissioner Shu is authentic in her desire to make this learning journey, is it appropriate for her to take this learning journey from ignorance to enlightenment while serving as a key decision-maker in a 50,000-student school district where 40% of the students are Black or Latino? And will she have credibility in making decisions, high-impact decisions that impact Black and Latino students? We've already seen that this is a big distraction for us and our business. We've, we've spent many hours tonight discussing and debating an issue that doesn't relate directly to student learning. And so I just think it's a valid question. I don't presume that we're going to necessarily answer that question tonight, but I want to raise those, those two questions for the board to consider moving forward.
I, I think the thing, I guess I want to start with is just to say that I think this isn't a performative act by the board, but really us trying to hold ourselves accountable to a higher standard. And really to kind of push back on the fact that we live in a world that is full of hate and institutional racism and bias. And lots of communities and people are marginalized and pushed to the side. And I, I think the, the most painful part of this is the cover that the initial statements have given to so many people to say things that are hateful or biased or prejudiced that really go back to a different era of the United States, of public education, where we said Black people didn't deserve to learn, where we didn't want people to speak other languages beside English, where we didn't value the fact that everyone is someone who can be successful and can learn. And so I think for us, we really need to analyze what we're doing and kind of what we're showing. Because I think sometimes people think that we're in San Francisco and that means that we're past all this. But this is actually where we're at. And this is where we've been at for a long time. And a lot of people don't want to realize that and address it. So if you didn't feel hurt by the comments, then you probably don't understand what's happening. And it's very ignorant on your part to not understand and feel other people's pain and have empathy for it. I would imagine that if it was your community that was generalized negatively, that you would actually feel the opposite way. And you'd want to see action taken. Whether or not you feel that Commissioner Shu needs to resign or not, you need to understand that harm was caused and we need to address it. And if you can't see that, then you're a part of the problem, right? You're not a part of the solution. If you can't understand that this isn't performative, it's about addressing racism and the long legacy of institutional racism that exists, right? Not just for people of color, but for everybody, right? The biases, the oppression that we face, then you're missing the point. And you aren't helping us reach our goal to educate students, but you're an obstacle to that, right? And you are a problem. And you are not a part of our solution. So I ask you to look inside yourself and figure out how you are being a part of the solution versus part of the problem. Thank you.
All students want to learn and thrive. It is our duty and responsibility to improve the system so that our students are supported and successful in their education and their learning. Commissioner Shu's recent statements were upsetting and deeply disappointing. I also feel compelled at this time tonight to speak out against the racism and institutional racism within our district, our public institutions, and the false notion that some students aren't meant to be academically successful. And those statements were acknowledging the anti-Black and anti-Latino stereotypes. In order to regain trust from our students and families, educators, and staff, I support the action tonight to formally admonish Commissioner Shu's statements. Commissioner Shu and I have had genuine and numerous conversations over the last couple of weeks about her initial apology, which is an important first step. But we've also talked about the deep work ahead in rebuilding trust with the SFUSD community, from personal learning to listening with students and their families, our educators and staff, recognizing the harm that has occurred and doing the work of how healing can begin. Tonight, only this course of action, this course of action can prove that Commissioner Shu acknowledges remorseful of her actions and will continue learning from our students, their families, and their lived experiences as she serves on the board. So if there is a desire to have another round of discussion, which will be structured to two minutes, do I see furthering? 是否可以进一步从 board 上进行？
commissioner Weissman Ward。好的， 这样结束了 board 的讨论。我想叫 roll call vote 对于这个项目。commissioner Shu。
是的。
commissioner Alexander。
是的。
vice president Bogus。
是的。
commissioner Mutamidi。
是的。
commissioner Sanchez。
是的。
commissioner Weissman Ward。
是的。
总统。是的。seven eyes。
打扰一下， board liaison， 我们想叫 student delegate vote。
我的歉意。student delegate Hanson。
是的。
student delegate Kenoshida。
是的。
nine eyes。谢谢。所以在这个时候， 我们结束了 board 的 action 今晚， 并且 formally adjourned the special meeting on August 2。